Good evening, everybody, and welcome to the February seventeenth regular meeting of the Jersey Village City Council. Call to order and announce a quorum is present. Madam Secretary Quorum is present. All right. Going to do invocation and pledge led by pulpit minister John Gooch from the Jersey Village Church of Christ.
Let's pray. Almighty God, we approach your throne of grace this evening on behalf of the city of Jersey Village. Pray for its leadership, pray for their wisdom, for their hearts of service, pray for the first responders of this city for their protection as they protect the people, and pray for the citizens of this city that your grace and your mercy would flow out on all. I pray for the proceedings that will take place tonight, that the business of this city will be conducted in a way that honors you. We thank you, Father, for all the blessings that you give us. We thank you for Jesus. It's in his name that we pray. Amen. This pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Move into item C, presentations. Presentation of Employee of the Month, Austin Bleese, City Manager.
Mayor and councilors, I'm excited to announce tonight that the February twenty twenty Employee of the Month is Dennis Taylor. Dennis continuously puts the city first in everything he does. He has volunteered to cook annual department appreciation lunches for the Parks and Recreation Department and so much more. Since joining the city, Dennis has taken on multiple large supplemental projects while still attending to his regular facility maintenance duties. In addition, Dennis has stepped up to handle the janitorial cleaning while we were in the transition of replacing our contracted janitorial service for part-time employees. All the while, Dennis continued to keep a smile on his face and a positive attitude, and he was always usually pretty good for a joke as well. One thing that impacts everyone, especially everybody here in this room, is that every week or every month Dennis does all of the setup for the council chambers, arranging the chairs, making sure everything's neat and tidy for us, and we greatly appreciate that. Dennis is thorough when working with contractors that are providing services to the city. Although it could be easy to simply leave the contractor to do the work, Dennis keeps a keen eye on them to ensure the work is of excellent quality and top-notch service for the city. He provides continued support throughout the department with support to the parks, recreation, and golf course divisions, and all the other city departments as well. Dennis is always prepared to lend a helping hand and offers his knowledge of facilities and maintenance to others' employees also. So Dennis, thank you for everything you do for Jersey Village, and congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you again. Thank y'all. Thank you for everything you do. Move into item D, citizen comments. Any person who desires to address counsel regarding an item on the agenda will be heard at this time in compliance with the Open Meetings Act unless the subject matter of the comment is on the agenda. City staff and council members are not allowed to discuss the subject. Each person is limited to five minutes for comments to city council. First card I have tonight is Mike Stenbridge.
Hi, Michael Stenbridge, one five four two two Jersey Drive. I'm with my wife Anna here. And so I did call city manager Austin Bleese. He's very polite to me. We had a very professional conversation. And, you know, I asked him about the elevations, and he said that there's a plan to try to buy out the homes on Jersey Drive and then, you know, put new ones there and all that with a developer possibly. But so I'll just state briefly, we were in the first round of elevations and then the second round, and then there are three rounds now, and we're not in any of those rounds. And so we would just like to be in a future round of elevations or redo or whatever because we flood, and flooding season is coming up, and so we're nervous about it. We're happy for the people that have the homes going up right now on, you know, West Jersey, I mean down from East Jersey, but we're just wondering if East Jersey could get some elevations, and that's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike.
Austin, this looks to, I'm going to relate this to item G one, home elevations. One of the things he mentioned was that we're looking at buyouts on Jersey Drive. From my understanding, we're also looking at tear-down, rebuild, cooperative efforts with the homeowner, correct?
Right. It's more of a tear-down, rebuild, cooperation between homeowners, home builders in the city, not necessarily just tear downs or buyouts.
Okay. Just making sure we're not strictly doing buyouts. Thank you. Next card I have is Mark Malloy.
Hi, my name's Mark Malloy, and I live at seventy-eight oh three Hamilton Circle. Past city council member of the city of Jersey Village, Texas. Citizens comments for the oh-two seventeen twenty twenty city council meeting. Please make my verbal comments and documents given to the city secretary a permanent record of the meeting. So anyway, the first thing I wanted to talk about is with Mr. Warren and him stating what the golf course made in revenue each month. And so I've looked at that, and the golf course shows for this budget year revenues over expenses at a loss of twenty-six thousand seven hundred and forty-one dollars and forty-eight cents, and that this time that is not counting many other costs associated with the golf course, such as an estimated five hundred thousand dollars owed for this year's principal and interest payments that will be made to continue paying for the golf course. And then the other reason I'm here is I'm here this evening to present to the Jersey Village City Government a document that I wrote and then took to the property owners that own the property to the center of White Oak Bayou on the north and west sides of the channel. I informed them that the city government at this meeting was going to consider hiring a consultant group for seventy thousand dollars to do a parks master plan. I informed them that the city, through their comprehensive plan, has intentions sometime in the future to try to build trails on the homeowner's property along the White Oak Bayou and the conveyance channels along White Wall Street and Coaster Street. I was only able to cover from Ecuador Street west to Lakeview by the time of the meeting. The document has the signatures of all the property owners I could reach that were home that do not want the trail. Out of all of the property owners that I contacted, there was only one that said they were okay with the trail being built. I'm also here to ask the city government to give the property owners that have a homestead exemption filed with Harris County, Texas, the full state allowed twenty percent exemption instead of the fourteen percent that they are getting at this time. I'm also asking that the city increase the sixty-five-year and older additional exemption from the current seventy-five thousand dollar exemption to the hundred and sixty thousand dollar exemption, which is what Harris County and the city of Houston is giving their citizens. The city government, per them, has stockpiled an estimated seventeen point five million dollars to be able to go on a spending spree. The city government should allow the citizens to vote on any election ballot or on an election ballot if they want a new eight million dollar city hall building to be built and if it should be moved from its current location to the south side of U.S. two ninety. There was a recent poll placed on the Jersey Village Next Door website that was eventually removed by someone other than the original poster. The results of the poll were seventy-six percent did not want city hall moved to the south side of U.S. two ninety. The city government should allow the citizens to vote during an election ballot if they want a new golf course clubhouse and conventions that are built per contractor bids to be anywhere from five to seven million dollars. City government should allow the citizens to vote on election ballot if they want the city government to spend, per their consulting estimate, one million dollars on a supplemental treated wastewater irrigation system. I'm asking again why the city government is not adhering to the engineering consultants' recommendations to build the golf course berm at the one hundred and eight feet elevation, which is, which if it is built, should be the elevation it should be constructed at. I'm also providing information about the Harris County Flood Control District in January or February of this year purchasing twenty-seven acre revenue country club for eleven point five million dollars and the intent to buy the additional estimated two hundred acre golf course grounds in the near future to be converted into a very effective flood control basin that will also be built out into very nice public park spaces with many types of activities for children as well as adults. The city of Houston has bought the Inwood Golf Course facility and is converting it into a very effective stormwater detention basin as well as public park space that serves the surrounding community with many activities options. The clubhouse has been converted into a meeting conference facility that is used for many activities. So that's basically all I wanted to talk about today. Thank you.
Thank you, Mark. Next card I have is Scott Schubring.
I don't have nearly as much to talk about as Mark does there, but so my name is Scott Schubring. I live at fifteen eight fourteen Tinbury Street. I lived in the city for about ten years, raising two boys, one at Post right now and one at Cook Middle School. So I attend these meetings when time allows, and I've heard, you know, specific concerns repeated from the same few people time and time again, but it's rare to hear people like myself come up and speak, and I'm here to kind of give thanks when it comes back around to it. You know, we all live, these people my age, like live pretty incredibly hectic lives and balancing work and play and kids' activities and staying, you know, health and all the other kind of stuff. You know, parents like myself, the ones who make up a large percentage of the city are busy taking kids to soccer, baseball, basketball, swim, taekwondo, scouts, and would rather be with their family than standing right here and explaining, you know, giving thanks to everybody. But so I'm here to give the other side of the story. So first, you know, the city can't stay stagnant. The status quo is not good enough. So we must always work to improve and attract the right kind of people to our neighborhood. You know, new couples looking to start a family or young families, what a community they can connect with and be active with their children without having to drive thirty minutes during rush hour to go someplace. They're looking for amenities like, you know, like we're like nice parks, splash pads we added, dog parks, nice walking trails. You mentioned the walking trails a minute ago, hiking drills, you know, all community events. You've done a great job promoting recent community events, space to have, you know, events in, like, you know, this building here, run out for Cub Scouts many times. It's nice to have more opportunities like that. It's amazing how often this place is always rented, rented out all the time. So decent restaurants close by, nice place to have, you know, good beer or glass of wine, nice coffee shop. You know, right now, if we want to have a craft beer someplace, I've got to go in town or especially if you want to have a place that's not, doesn't allow smoking. Place, you know, CrossFit, yoga, someplace close by would be fantastic. You know, we're playing, we're playing catch-up here compared to the other neighborhoods around. So if you've been to the newer master plan communities, let's say like Coal Creek or, you know, Bridgeland, Town Lake, you can kind of look to see what other, what, you know, people are looking for in neighborhoods. And it's all that stuff I mentioned up there. You know, they're sacrificing, you know, extreme drive time to go out there and drive out there to those far out places so they can have those amenities. We're much closer in. We can add these type of things. We'll attract the right people to our neighborhood to keep the neighborhood growing. So if we continue to focus on amenities found in modern neighborhoods, we'll be doing ourselves a favor so we can stay around in the long run, not turn into a city full of rental properties. I've heard complaints in the past about tax rates in our city, but have you ever seen our HOA cost of those other neighborhoods? They pay over a thousand dollars in their HOA, whereas, you know, if you're not on a lake, you don't pay HOA fee here. So you compare your tax rates to HOA, that you got to, you have to look at the whole picture here, right? I'm not sure everyone is doing that. I'd like to remind everyone that the city council and the mayor positions are non-paid volunteer roles, and their service to the city needs to be welcomed and encouraged with positive feedback rather than verbal abuse. I've heard, I've been standing in this room before and heard some, you know, verbal abuse and unprofessionalism back to the committee. It's really hard to find volunteers out there to step up. I do quite a bit of volunteer work, both Cub Scouts, you know, swim team, I did soccer, I do stuff with work. Just last week, I volunteered at Cook, Cook Middle School to speak for this junior achievement inspire program, and I had to do two roles. Why? They couldn't get people to step up and speak. So I had to do double shifts, spoke twice, you know, two twenty-minute sessions per fifty-minute period all day long because they couldn't find another person with, could speak to STEM. There's not enough people out there who are willing to step up. One of the reasons are they don't want to take the abuse they're getting. So it's not, you know, you want to be encouraged to our volunteers or stepping up and helping out the neighborhood. You'll notice the many of the people in the room, you know, volunteer and do things, their wives do things. You will also notice that they're the same people, the same people you, you go to, you go to Post, the same people you see there are always the same people. You go do a volunteer gig, go to a swim meet, same people doing double shifts, triple shifts, multiple roles because no one else is stepping up. Hard to find volunteers. Do not yell at them. In summary.
I got to cut you off, Scott. It's five minutes. But thank you very much. Do you have anybody else aspiring to speak tonight? All right. Move on to the city manager's report. Does anybody on council have any questions for a city manager?
Austin, I just wanted to, looking at the golf course finances, Mr. Malloy brought it up. I thought it was pretty interesting. If you look back on the revenues that the city has collected from the golf course these last couple of months are usually historically some of the lowest. And yes, as of right now, the golf course fund is for the year about negative twenty-six thousand seven hundred during the slowest period of the year for the golf course, middle of winter. So the fact that it's only behind by that much when our highest revenue months are yet to come is an impressive feat. So I think that congrats are due to the staff of the golf course for keeping the course in great shape even through the winter and continuing to be able to drive business there. I'm really looking forward to seeing what they're able to do when the weather turns out even better than it is now.
If I could add to that, Bobby, the winter months are when they do most of their maintenance work also, so the costs are higher.
That is a good point. They're replacing a lot of bunkers right now.
And don't forget about the weather, the number of days available or less during the winter. One other thing, Austin, I noticed that when reviewing the income balances, that sales tax were way ahead of schedule, and I just wanted to know, do you believe that trend will continue?
Yeah, so as of Friday, we're about fifty percent collection rate for sales tax for the year from what we projected. So we're definitely above, moving faster than we thought we would, which is great. For the remainder of this fiscal year, we think that will continue, but we are keeping an eye on the state comptroller's office. Their rulemaking process for the online sales tax could impact how our sales taxes generated and remitted to the city. So we're keeping an eye on that, but for right now, everything looks good.
Anything else? Last month, I said thanks to a lot of different departments, but I think I left off one that was pretty important, and Harry Ward's department, he's in charge of Public Works, and I know that they've been doing a lot of street panel replacements in-house, and the fact that it saved, I think, one, just one panel replacement saved something like forty thousand dollars and repeated that over and over and over for the different panels that we have. And I just wanted to point out that that's great savings doing that in-house, and I wanted to just highlight that, and we appreciate that very much. Anything else? All right. Move on to the consent agendas. Is there any item on the consent agenda that council would like to place into the regular session?
I don't want to make a change, however, I'm going to abstain because of F three. I don't have any problems with any others, but I'm going to abstain for the whole vote.
Anybody else? If not, looking for a motion?
I move to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any more discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Move on to regular session. Item number one, consider resolution number twenty twenty dash twelve, authorizing the city manager to enter into an agreement with Jeffrey S. Ward and Associates for FMA Program Home Elevation Grant Administration and Project Management Services, Austin Bleese, City Manager.
Mayor and councilors, as part of the home elevation grant funds that we're expecting to receive, we went out for RFQ for home elevation grant management services similar to what we did last time. We received two proposals, one from Jeffrey Ward and Associates and the other one from IBTS. We reviewed the proposals, and Jeffrey Ward is the one that has the highest points. He had ninety-two points and IBTS had eighty-eight. So based on these rankings, we're recommending Jeffrey S. Ward and Associates. They've done workforce, they're doing the workforce right now. They've done great work, and they have done a lot of work in the county, so they're very well experienced. We got the full list of things that they will be doing for us in the packet, and based upon the grant funding for this portion of the project, the extensive work outside this company will do, it seems like a very valuable use of funds to use them. We would not enter into any contract until the grant has been officially awarded, which should happen sometime in the next week to months to six months. We're waiting for the state on that, or for FEMA on that. So the grant amount is seven, the total grant amount is seven hundred and sixty-one thousand. Our cost share is eleven, or one hundred and seventeen thousand thirty-four dollars for total project cost of eight hundred and seventy-eight thousand. That's for the elevations and everything.
Any questions for Austin?
Is this the company used with the first grant?
Yes, sir.
Austin, are we anticipating any grant applications or grant programs that would cover the local share like they did with the current ongoing elevations?
We are, we believe they will. We're waiting for something in writing from the state on that still.
The way I read this, this is part of that, our cost share?
Correct. So we'll pay about nine percent or so of this total cost of this contract.
And this is not in joking, this is just for full, Jeffrey S. Ward is no relation to Harry Ward?
Not to my knowledge.
Any other questions for just, for Austin? All right. Seeing none, looking for a motion on the resolution?
I move to approve resolution number twenty twenty dash one two.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any more discussion on the topic? Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Item number two, consider resolution number twenty twenty dash thirteen, selecting contractors to complete home elevation work in relation to the FY twenty eighteen FEMA Flood Medigation Assistance Grant. Austin Bleese, City Manager.
Mayor and councilors, just as last time, we've gone up for RFQ for elevation companies to actually do the elevating. This time, we only have four homes, so we're recommending we only get two, pre-qualified two contractors, one being Planet Three and one being Excelo. We received their RFQs, ranked them, and those two are the highest point getters. Both of those companies are doing work with us right now in the current round of elevations. Both of them seem to be doing good work as well, so it's a good, good thing for us to be able to see that as well. So once we do get the final award, we'll host a meeting with the contractors, the grant administrator, and the homeowners to get everybody on the same page and talk about next steps moving forward.
Any questions for Austin?
Austin, I see we've got a three-person team ranking everyone. Architectura, is that one of our current elevation vendors?
They are, yes.
And I noticed that of the three-person team, there was a six-point spread between the average and median. The median was ninety-six, that means the person in the middle, probably someone the same or higher in point scoring, and then the average was ninety, so that means that third person scored them pretty low. Are there any concerns with the current work that they're doing that may have influenced the points here?
The current work is definitely okay. There's no, no issues with the current work, it's, but it comes down to the fact we only really need two for this round as well, so.
I was just making sure Christian didn't score them low because of something that was going on right now, but okay.
Any other questions for Austin? And just to be, just to be clear, this is, this is for this upcoming year, which I think was.
For the grant that we applied for back in November of twenty eighteen.
Gotcha.
Just for clarification, this is for four homes. Is this still part of phase one?
This would be the second round, phase two.
This is phase two, and there's only four homes?
Correct.
Yeah, first year was eighteen, went down to seventeen, and then second year was four, and the third application round we just, we just pushed forward was for thirty.
Thirty, yeah. You'll have to remember, in phase two, we also submitted a grant application for tear-down rebuilds, part of the FEMA funding, which that one was denied, and we also applied for a hundred thousand dollar design grant for the E one twenty-seven. So with all three of those, we, we thought that wasn't going to be keeping staff plenty busy to manage all of those ones.
All right, so it's a low number of elevations, but we also had other projects that we applied for that may not be as visible as homes going up into the air.
Correct, yes. Yeah, I would caution against thinking about this just in the set way that we have it in the plan because we also don't know for sure what funds are going to be available. There may be more, there may be less. I think at this point, our approach is simply every opportunity that's available, we try to put our best foot forward, try to put as many homes in there and just push forward as fast as we can.
All right, and, you know, I think it's worth reiterating too, that it's a competitive grant process. We're competing with municipalities and states all over the country, and so none of this we should take for granted. I get a lot of questions about, hey, why did this home get included? And this home is way more severe. It's about creating a certain score that's going to get as many homes as we possibly can, the help that they need, as quickly as possible, but it's not going to happen all at the same time. It's not going to happen all at once, but we're going to do our best depending on many different variations in that funding year's availability to get the most help from those people. So there's some homes that you wouldn't even think have flooded that are getting elevated, and it's because their BCE score may be low, but put that with a home that's repetitively flooded, you know, that's an SRP home, and, you know, it's, score is five, so it evens out, but, you know, otherwise, we would just put a packet with all high scores and we would totally get it, but then in years down the road, we would, those homes that would have received help won't have as high a score. So there's a lot of, there's a lot of variables that go into this. It's unfortunately a little heartless when it comes down to it because it is about BCE scores and points and money, and while, you know, we have the severity that, you know, we have, we want to see as much done as possible, as fast as possible, there is a process and there's a reason behind the madness. So, you know, keep, keep asking the questions and keep, keep participating. It's a long-term flood recovery plan, not a short-term, quick recovery plan. It's for years and years and years that we're going to need help. So I think y'all are doing a great job. I mean, it speaks volumes that you've been awarded so, so much. We never thought we would even get this far, you know, and what you've received in award funds so far has been amazing, so keep, keep that, keep that going. Any other questions on this topic? All right, I'm looking for a motion on resolution twenty twenty dash thirteen.
Move to approve resolution number twenty twenty dash thirteen.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any more discussion on the topic? Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Item number three, consider resolution number twenty twenty dash fourteen, authorizing the city manager to execute a contract with Burditt Consultants LLC for a master, for a parks master plan. Jason Alfaro, Parks Director.
Good evening, mayor and council. Last month, city council approved resolution twenty twenty dash zero seven, authorizing the city manager to negotiate a contract with Burditt. Since that time, we had an opportunity to meet with them. The contract that they presented outlines the type of meetings that we'll have. We'll have one public workshop, we'll have one open house event to present the draft recommendations. They'll also have a booth at one of the city-sponsored events, such as Spring Fling or Farmer's Market, and then finally, they have attend city staff official meetings, which may include the Parks Board or city council. So I think we have a pretty decent amount of public input opportunities right there. The Recreation and Events Committee would be the steering committee during the process, and to allow citizen comment engagement definitely will be encouraged. This would allow the community input throughout the entire process. A project would take roughly six months to complete if the work commenced in March upon the execution of this contract. A few of the key elements that will emerge from the plan will be recommendations and improvements to the parks, programming changes, opportunities for expanded equality of life programs, partnership opportunities, recommendation to ordinances and policies, and some park conceptual renderings. The fee that we have proposed is sixty-six thousand dollars, and we had seventy thousand dollars budgeted for this.
Thank you, Jason. Any questions for Jason?
Jason, we do have the Comprehensive Plan Update Committee that's going to be appointed in June. Is there any plan to kind of work some of this together? I mean, I know that the Comprehensive Plan covers a lot more than parks, but it does have some impact on the Comprehensive Plan. Is there any thought as to how that might be integrated?
We can definitely look at that and see how we can involve both of those two parties.
Yeah, and, I mean, the other good thing is this actually is a much deeper treatment of the park situation than the Comprehensive Plan. I saw it's a ten-year action plan, so that's, and it looks like it's very detailed in regards to what they're going to look at as far as potential infrastructure and opportunities to expand the opportunities for recreation in the area. So I think that's phenomenal.
Yes, sir.
I agree. I was about to say, I mean, the Comprehensive Plan was very much an overview, and this, this really kind of dives down deeper into, into the facilities that we have as far as parks and recreation goes. We're definitely seeing a lot more programs, we're seeing movies in the park, we're seeing farmer's farmer's markets. We're, we're, we're starting to, I, I know this year, we're starting to implement softball and kickball and all these different things and, and, and we've never really done that before. So it'll be nice to sort of see how those programs are impacted by the state of our parks. And I know the citizens, at least when they talk to me, parks are, parks and amenities are a very big part of their lives and, you know, we've, we've improved with the splash pad, we've, we've added the dog park, we've, we've, you know, started to improve accessibility in, in the parks for disabled children. And so it's nice to see that, that move forward, but to get feedback from the citizens on exactly what they want to see in their parks will be great. So I'm, I'm happy to see this move forward. With that, is there any other questions for Jason? And if not, I'm looking for a motion.
Move to approve resolution number 2020-14.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any more discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. And that concludes our very, very short meeting. We're going to end with mayor and council comments, starting with Mr. Warren.
I just want to thank everyone for coming out. Maybe we can do more short meetings like this rather than the marathon sessions some of you may be used to, but I do want to encourage people to continue to come out and to stay engaged with their city government. And as always, if you have any questions or you have feedback for us or anything of that sort, please do email us. That's by far the best way to get ahold of us. Happy to schedule time to meet with people in person or schedule a phone call if you've got concerns or anything you'd like to discuss, we're here for you.
I'll echo Bobby's comments. The other thing is, members of council and the mayor were invited to the Jersey Village Senior Outreach Meeting, annual, annual dinner this, this past January. Many of us were able to attend. I found that to be, not only the event great, but to see what that, that crew has done in two years, just two years. The, the room was full, well-attended, and the number of programs they have. Didn't know much about it until I got to council, but I, I plan to throw my hat in the ring and help them out as, as a private citizen whenever I get the chance. The other thing is, if you'll see in the, the other committee room, they're setting up to vote. I encourage everyone to, no matter which primary you take part in, educate yourself on the candidates, the issues, where people stand, and use your opportunity to go vote and go do it. Early, early voting starts tomorrow.
Elections have consequences. Go vote. Congratulations Chief Riggs. Now you start officially as the full-time chief on March, March 1st. Very excited about that. Congratulations. JVSO ties so well with Scott's comments tonight. That is a group of neighbors who are civic-minded that decided to devote themselves, and when you look at that group, you see the same people volunteering over and over and over. And unfortunately, Scott, that's just a problem society-wide. I, I can't believe how many different groups you look. It's the same people over and over. And volunteerism in the U.S. has just gone down to sad, sad levels, and it's really something we need to really instill in our kids. That has to change. You know, you can't, that, there's volunteer things that can't be changed into paid positions, paid people because we can't afford it. And I, I really would love to see more volunteerism. Get out, you know, don't be scared of, what if I screw up? There are people that will guide you. If you're willing to help, they'll come alongside you, so that's it.
We did not introduce Chief Riggs, did we?
We, we, he's been our interim. I was going to introduce him more formally in March, but...
For those that don't know, he is our permanent chief now.
Sorry, it was an email.
Anyway, I'm going to go ahead and double up on what James expressed about the volunteers. I mean, I, the ones I normally mix with aren't, aren't the same as other people and it, sometimes some groups get overlooked, but it came to my attention of all the parents that are out there volunteering their time with the kids' groups, and that's extremely important activity, so I'm going to express thanks for that.
Thanks, everybody. I also want to welcome Chief Riggs to, to, to the team officially March 1st. We've, I, I know the guys and gals in the police department have, you've earned their respect doing ride-alongs with them while you were an interim chief, and so it's good to have somebody on, on the staff that really takes an interest in, in, in the day-to-day work that our police officers do. So welcome aboard. I, I want to thank everybody who came up to give a, a comment and want to thank everybody who's volunteered to make the city a great place. We have many opportunities opening up in, in the near future. As we mentioned before, there's going to be the, the Parks Master Plan, which all citizens are invited to give comments on. We have the Comprehensive Plan Commission that's going to re, look at the Comprehensive Plan that we approved back in 2050 and, 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 you know, make sure it's updated to reflect our priorities today. So there's many of opportunities to participate and again, we, as Scott mentioned earlier, seeing the same people over and over and over, it, it is kind of frustrating. So if you can kind of find the time to volunteer for an hour a month, maybe two hours a month to participate in a, a commission, that's a great one to participate in. That's how I got on council. I really got involved in the city behind the scenes by touring facilities, meeting with the city staff and seeing how, how the sausage is made and, and it, it really piqued my interest and that's really kind of how I got interested in council. So that's a great one to get, get involved in. I think that's about it. Can I blabber on for five more minutes? No. Elections starts tomorrow, as it was mentioned, early voting, so please participate, inform yourself and, and, there we go. That's it, everybody. Have a great month. Meeting adjourned.